October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, media, the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're glad to have everybody with us in person and those watching online. Teresa, where is our, uh, do we have the, who was our invocation? I don't see that. Here we go. Sorry about that, y'all.
That'd be me, Judge.
Okay, that's the sheriff. Good. Well, good morning, Sheriff. We have our, for our invocation this morning, we have our very own Sheriff Tracy Murfree, and our pledge to be led by Jeff May, our county auditor. If you'll please stand, I want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones.
Will you pray with me, please? Our gracious heavenly Father God, thank you for another day, another opportunity, Father, to, to serve you, another day of life that you've given us, Father. Thank you. God, I pray for our brothers and sisters in Florida today, Father, that you would bless them and, and send them the help that they need, God. And Father, I lift up our linemen and our, our police officers and our emergency people from Texas who have made that trip to Florida, God, to, to help our fellow man, Father. And I ask that you keep them safe while they're there and bring them home to us safe. Father, I lift up this body, Father, that you would have these, this court do your will, Father, that they would rely on you for decisions that they have to make, and I ask a blessing upon each and every one of them and their families. Father, in this traumatic political world that we find ourselves in, Father, I just pray for each and every candidate, Father, that is, that is putting their, their life on hold to, to try to serve their community, Father, and I, I ask a special blessing upon their families, Father, that they take the brunt of most of it, God, and I, I just pray for their peace and their comfort. Father, I lift up all our first responders in a special prayer for the men and women of the Denton County Sheriff's Office, Father, who every single day put their life on the line to serve their fellow man. God, I just pray for no turmoil, Father, for no violence, and that everyone understands that your will will be done, Father, and that we, that's what we should strive for, God, and, and, and thank you for watching over us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Very nice. All right, Mr. May.
Please join me in a pledge to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and to our great state. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Well, thank you, Sheriff, and thank you, Mr. May. At this time, let's go to item number one, which is for public input for items not listed on the agenda. We have one registered presenter today, and it's Mr. Charles Lee. Good morning, Mr. Lee. I would remind you that we have a three-minute limit on our public comments, so go right ahead, sir.
Good morning, um, good morning, everybody. I just want to speak about, um, the, what's happening in the, the news, how, um, they're talking about, um, how the Secretary of State and, um, how we have to talk about the, um, non, non-citizen, how we have to take the non-citizen IDs. I just want to step back and say, this all is a process because of, um, mostly because of the liberals, because when you, when you, Democrats, when you register to vote, I always said voter integrity starts with registration. And registration, when you fill out these registration forms, people are assuming that they're verifying the citizenship and the identity to people on these voter registration forms, and I'm saying right now, there is no verification system. People don't understand that America is an honor system, and there is no system behind system that verifies the identity of these people who fill out these forms. So anybody could fill these forms out in any name they want, and they could just lie on the form. And then from there, you think, oh, we have a, Texas has a voter ID program, um, law, but people don't understand, the Texas voter ID law is all full of all kind of holes, it's might as well be Swiss cheese. There's all kind of holes in the, um, Texas voter, uh, in the voter ID law, and one of those holes is that, is the non-citizen ID. It's just an ID to say who you are, and even then, there are more holes, especially with the ridge, if people just lie and say they lost their ID, then they still have to let them vote. And that's what people understand. Voter registration, we need to fix the voter registration process. It's a real serious issue, but unfortunately, every time any state or local government tries to verify the citizenship of voters, automatically, they get sued by the federal government and by some liberal, liberal hack job, and I'm starting to think that this is really is a conspiracy, like, I think, starting to believe they really do want illegal aliens to vote. Because what other reason why would you try to not want to verify the voter rolls and make sure these people are who they say they are and who they're registered to be, other than they, they want people to vote illegally? That's the only i- idea I can think of, because it's just a simple process. I have my birth certificate, I have no problem showing my birth certificate, saying that I was born in this country and that I'm a legal voter, but then you got these other, other political side, other side of the aisle that says, oh, they, they absolutely obstruct at great measures and lengths with lawsuits and all kind of obstruction to keep that process from happening. And I'm saying, we need to do something about it and start pushing back against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And I do appreciate Secretary of State Nelson providing clarification on that guidance to regarding election integrity, that those are clarified the process whereby US citizens are going to be voting. Thank you. All right, let's go to item, we have no other registered commenters. Let's go to item three A, which is approval of a resolution recognizing Eddie Puckett's retirement and any appropriate action. Mr. Puckett, where are you? There you are. Good morning, sir. We're glad to have you here.
Glad to be here.
Well, we have a, I'll tell you how this goes, since you have not retired with us before, so, so, so we will, we will, um, I'll read this resolution here, and we'll be happy to welcome any comments from the sheriff's office, and then, sir, we promise to give you the last words. Does that sound good?
Yes.
So this is resolution honoring Eddie Puckett for over twenty-six years of service to Denton County. The Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, during, during a regular session on the fifteenth day of October, twenty twenty-four, consider the following resolution, whereas investigator Eddie Puckett has been a loyal employee with the Denton County Sheriff's Office since March the fifth, nineteen ninety-eight, and will retire on October the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, with over twenty-six years of service. And whereas Eddie Puckett began his career as a detention officer, Eddie worked three years in his capacity while attending the University of North Texas Police Academy, and upon graduation, was assigned to the patrol section for five years. In two thousand and six, he was promoted to school resource officer. In twenty fourteen, he transferred to the crisis intervention unit as a mental health investigator, where he has continued in this role for the duration of his career. Whereas investigator Puckett has plans of enjoying his retirement with his wife Tammy of forty-three years, his two daughters and son-in-law, and four granddaughters. Eddie plans on vacation in his RV with his family. He also plans on gardening, trying to complete his never-ending honey to, honey-do list, we all have one, walking his best dog friend Tucker and spending time at Eddie Land, which is his residence. And whereas investigator Puckett's supervisor states that he has been a great asset and a valuable member of the Denton County Sheriff's Office. Eddie's dedication, hard work, and positive attitude have inspired us all. His leadership and mentorship have left an indelible mark on our team, and his absence will surely be felt. Quote, Eddie, your legacy within the Denton County Sheriff's Office is one of professionalism, integrity, and compassion. You have touched the lives of so many, and your impact will be felt for years to come. We are deeply grateful for your wisdom and guidance, which has been invaluable to us. Your retirement is well-deserved, and we take comfort in knowing that you have earned this time for yourself and your loved ones. I wish you nothing but happiness, good health, and fulfillment in the years ahead. May this new chapter be filled with joy, relaxation, and new adventures. Thank you for everything, and congratulations on your retirement. You will be greatly missed, but your legacy and influence will live on in our hearts in the work we continue to do. Now, therefore, be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Eddie Puckett our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to Denton County, and we congratulate Eddie on his well-earned retirement and extend our best wishes to him for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court this fifteenth day of October, twenty twenty-four, upon a motion made by,
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any comments before we?
I just saw the sheriff walking up, so, go ahead, ma'am.
This is a personal question. Puckett is a very unusual last name. Did you have a relative in Oklahoma City named Bill Puckett?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I have one in Gainesville named Bill Puckett.
Probably not the one I went to school with, but anyway, I just wondered, because it's a very unusual last name, congratulations and thanks for your service.
Thank you very much.
All right, anyways, Commissioner Mitchell.
I just want to thank you for twenty-six years of service with, um, I almost said general telephone, you guys. With Denton County, I worked for GT, I worked for GT for twenty years, with Denton County. Uh, thank you for all that you do, being a mental health investigator. I know that took some time, some trials and tribulations, but I thank you for all that you have done for the citizens of, of Denton County and that department. You are highly recommended by the sheriff, and you're going to be missed by all of us. We thank you, these quotes, let us know what everyone thought about you in that sheriff's office. We thank you for all that you do, thank you for your family for allowing us to have you for twenty-six years. You know, it's, these jobs are not about just us, especially the jobs that you all do, the hard jobs, they're not about just you, it's about your family also. So thank you so much, and please enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, investigator Puckett, uh, thank you so much for your years of service for Denton County and the citizens. Obviously, it will be very, very well missed here, but enjoy the retirement that you've so well deserved and earned. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
If you want to say anything, okay. Well, I want to congratulate you on making it to twenty-six years here, and you've gone through lots of sheriffs during that time, so, um, but I realize, want to thank you on behalf of the million residents that call Denton County home, thank you. You know, you may not have got an opportunity to meet them or they meet you, but, um, I extend appreciation from, from each of them to you, because it is people like you who answer the call to public service, which I always talk about, and, and, um, your willingness to serve decades here and be promoted, and obviously, through the comments made by your supervisors, you're obviously left a lasting impact, and I want to thank you for that, and that will continue to live on. We have the sheriff right behind you here, would like to say something, and then I promise you get the last word.
It's, uh, you know, you've heard the term, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. Eddie is the least squeakiest wheel I've ever.
We need more people like him.
Come across in, in my career, you know, and I've, Eddie's been a part of the sheriff's office for a long time, and, and I've known Eddie for a long time, since going back to when I, when I was a ranger. And if you'll notice on that, uh, he, uh, was a school resource officer and went to the mental health unit, which is a, you know, a logical transition for, if you can put up with those kids, you can, you can deal with a lot of stuff, but, uh, I wanted to talk about Eddie's work in the mental health unit. Once again, I'll talk about the squeaky wheel. That is the least squeakiest wheel unit that I have at the sheriff's office, and it should be the, the biggest because of what they have to deal with on a daily basis.
Yeah.
Uh, I've, I've been in law enforcement for thirty-six years, and that is a job that I could not do. And I'm thankful, uh, that there are folks like Eddie who are willing to step in and do that job, especially in these days and times where our, the mental health, uh, problems that we have in, in our country, our state, and in our county is tremendous. And that, that's a unit that I never worry about, because I know they're out there taking care of business, and it's one of the most dangerous positions we have at the sheriff's office, when you, you walk into some of those situations where, uh, people who are suffering mental health breakdowns are, uh, having problems and issues. If, if these guys are there, there's a problem going on, and the extra training they have to go through to be able to evaluate these folks and make decisions. Eddie's going to be missed, and, uh, an employee like Eddie cannot be replaced, whoever steps up has some big shoes to fill. And, uh, I'm a little jealous that you get to travel around and, and do those things, but, uh, Eddie has, has put in his time as a public servant, and he has, uh, done a tremendous job, and he's going to be sorely missed at the sheriff's office.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, Eddie, it's all yours.
Oh, well, thank you, Judge, Commissioners, and Sheriff, uh, for the kind words and, uh, and for honoring me here today with this proclamation. It's been an honor to serve you, uh, for the past twenty-six years at the Denton County Sheriff's Office, and, uh, I want to thank my family, my friends, the sheriff and his administration, and all my colleagues at the Denton County Sheriff's Office for all their support during my career at the Denton County Sheriff's Office. I've always been proud to say that I work at the Denton County Sheriff's Office. And, uh, as my time is ending, as a ploy at the Denton County Sheriff's Office, I ask God to continue to bless you and protect you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. All right. Next, let's go to item thirteen A. We do have Judge Jones here to answer any questions. Item thirteen A is approval of the, to transfer the family drug court from the three hundred sixty-seventh District Court to the four hundred and sixty-seventh District Court in any appropriate action. The chair move for approval.
Second.
Move a second by Commissioner Williams. Members, are there any questions y'all may have on this item related to this item? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Judge Jones, for being here. I appreciate all that you do. Thank you, thank you. Let's just go to, we, we have Judge Ramsey here as well for thirteen B, we have approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-five for year four, the Texas Intergent Defense Commission and TIDC Intergent Defense Improvement Grant Award, grant number two-one-two-two-five-C-zero-four, an amount of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars, in any appropriate action.
Moved to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? Any questions? Did you need to make any comments? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Let's go ahead and do thirteen C, approval of the subcontract between Denton County and the University of North Texas, subcontract number SRA seven eight zero, related to year one, of the Samson Adult Fan, and Family Treatment Drug Court Grant, grant number IH-seven-nine-T-one-zero-eight-seven-eight-seven-three-zero-seven-zero-one, in any appropriate action. This is a two-hundred-and-eleven drug treatment court. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item thirteen D, approval of the acceptance of fiscal year twenty twenty-five Homeland Security Grant Program. This is Urban Area Security Initiative, UASI Mobile EOC Enhancement, an amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-nine cents, and the distribution of grant funds to the appropriate Denton County Budget Line Items and the, in any appropriate action. We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item thirteen E, approval of a resolution requesting permission to submit an application for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Texas Commission on Environmental Qualities Local Emergency Planning Committee Grant Program, in the approximate amount of twelve thousand dollars plus or minus, and any appropriate action. The chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen F, approval of a resolution for Span Incorporated, related to an application for grant funds from the Texas Department of Agriculture for, for Home Delivered Meal Grant Program, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then, I need to, let's go to, we'll continue on with fourteen A, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas, and the town of Copper Canyon, Texas, provide engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation. Provide engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility, relocation, inspections and construction of a State's Drive Bridge at an estimated cost of completion of $1,200,000 with the town agreeing to contribute an amount towards satisfaction completion of the project, which shall not exceed $250,000. And the county agrees to secure the contracts for the schematic environmental clearance, PSNE, construction, engineering of the project and to oversee any and all necessary engineering which may be required for satisfactory completion of the project and any appropriate action.
Judge, I move approval. This was one of the bond, 22 bond projects that Copper Canyon had, the only one they had in the bond program. So I move approval.
Thank you. All right, motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14B, approval of the inter-local cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the city of Lake Dallas, Texas to provide engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility locations, inspections and construction of Hundley Drive between 200 West Hundley Drive and 800 East Hundley Drive, with the county agreeing to contribute $1 million toward satisfactory completion of the project. With funding to come from Shady Shores Road, Lake Dallas Precinct 3, Trip 22 PI Bonds, Order Line Item 8974449020 and to be transferred to Hundley Drive Precinct 3, Order Line Item 8975909040.
Another bond project. I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14C, approval of change order number four and usage of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding for the Statement of Work and Collaborative Solutions LLC for the Enterprise Resource Planning Software and Implementation Services in amount of $109,327 as recommended by Scott Aldridge, Director of Purchasing, Kevin Carr, Director of Technology Services, Jeff May County Auditor, Cindy Brown Treasurer, Alejandro Moreno, Budget Officer and Gustavo Hernandez, Director of Human Resources. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14D, approval of change order number five and usage of American Rescue Plan ARPA funding for the Statement of Work and Collaborative Solutions LLC for the Enterprise Resource Planning ERP Software and Implementation Services in amount of $20,000 as recommended by Scott Aldridge, Director of Purchasing, Kevin Carr, Director of Technology Services, Jeff May County Auditor, Cindy Brown Treasurer, Alejandro Moreno, Budget Officer and Gustavo Hernandez, Director of Human Resources.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14E, approval of addendum number one to the main subscription agreement between Denton County, Texas and Workday Incorporated, which includes order form 004733100, an amount of $412,226 with funding for the first year, $40,401 to come from American Rescue Plan Act funds, Order Line Item 5466611086, Technology Software Service ERP Implementation Services for RFP 222690 as recommended by Scott Aldridge, Director of Purchasing, Kevin Carr, Director of Technology Services, Jeff May County Auditor, Cindy Brown Treasurer, Alejandro, Alejandro Moreno, Budget Officer and Gustavo Hernandez, Director of Human Resources.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14F, approval of Elections Administrator Bond, an amount of $20,000 with a premium of $70 for Frank Phillips, Denton County Elections Administrator, with funding to come from general funds, county official bonds, Order Line Item 0155101040. The chair moves for approval.
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Members, let's go back to item two, which is our consent agenda. Is there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
Moved to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today is item two A, approval of order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item two B is approval of miscellaneous equipment and software services. Item two C is approval of the September 2024 Road Superintendent Reports Presented for Recording Purposes Only. Next is item five A, approval of the bill report payments from CSCD, Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, BIT, Interest and DA. Forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right, we have a motion for, we have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item five B, discussion and approval of the fiscal year 2024 monthly financial reports through July 2024. The chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six A, approval of the report on proceeds from the online surplus auction 242828 held in September 2024.
Moved to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six B, approval of disposal miscellaneous surplus in compliance with Chapter 263 152 A3 of the Local Government Code for disposition of surplus property and the abandonment of inmate property in compliance with the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure 1817.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six E, approval to declare miscellaneous vehicles, heavy equipment and tools as surplus advertised in place in online auction 242832 to be held from October the 21st, 2024 through November the 1st, 2024.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six D, approve the renewal of ITV 222693 Elections Moving Services with Duray Moving and Storage Incorporated. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six E, approval of the purchase of 70 Stop the Bleed Kids from North American Rescue LLC through the Buy Board Cooperative Contract 69823, an amount of $33,939.60 to be purchased with the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six F, approval of the purchase of a Caterpillar Incorporated Model 430 Back Hole Loader from Holdcap, around $158,610 through the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract 020223CAT. And any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six G, approval of award of RFP 242823 Disaster Debris Monitoring Services to Tetra Tech Incorporated in the primary, as a primary, and Thompson Consulting Services LLC as a sec, secondary in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven A, approval of budget may request 100040 to allocate $140,000 from general fund fund balance revenues collected from fees to assist defendants with counseling, testing and other services in the Drug Court Program in the 211th District Court, the 462nd District Court, the 467th District Court and County Criminal Court Number Five.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven B, approval of budget may request 100050 for grant WJJAEP discretionary to roll over unspent funds from the fiscal year 2024 to the fiscal year 2025 in a student assessment supplies line item for a total of $72.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven C, approval of budget may request 100060 for the public health to increase revenues and allocate expenditures for the fiscal year 2025 Hanson's Disease Control Grant, an amount of $143,631. And any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven D, approval of budget may request 100070 for public health to increase revenues and allocate expenditures for the fiscal year 2025 Immunizations Local Grant Program in amount of $259,182.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven E, approval of budget may request 100080 for the Technology Services Telecommunications and Network Department to transfer $11,255 from telephone service to Technology Capital to fund a fiber cable location and mapping transmitter critical for locating fiber lines before construction. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven F, approval of budget may request 100090 to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for various operating line items for the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division's DIRECT Adult Drug Court Veterans Court Grant in amount of $145,219. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven G, approval of budget may request 100100 to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for various operating line items for the Samson Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration, the Drug Court Grant Program in amount of $252,559.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is, all of, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I was getting ahead of myself. Next is eight A, report from Human Resource Regarding Hiring Actions of Elected Officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hire in adult probation, one new hire in the district's office, district attorney's office, four promotion in the district attorney's office, one new hire in JP1, one new hire in juvenile probation, one new hire in the sheriff's office, that one is a detention officer, one, two promotion in the sheriff's office, two new hires in the tax office and one promotion in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Very good. All right. Thank you so much. Again, that is presented for recording purposes only. Next is item 10A, approval of the preliminary acceptance of Copper Canyon Drainage Repair Project. This is Commissioner Precinct Four.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 10B, approval of the preliminary road acceptance of Lux Lane. This is Commissioner Precinct Four.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 10C, approval of the Lonesome Dove Edition Final Plastics, lots 1 through 3, block A. This is 55.5 acres located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 10D, approval of the final road acceptance of the Bent Rail Farms Subdivision into the county maintenance system. This is located in Commissioner Precinct Four.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 10E, approval of the request to hold a public hearing on November the 19th, 2024 at 9:00 AM for the replat of Ponderosa Ranch, lots 3R and 4R, Block A. This is 118.87 acres located in Commissioner Precinct Four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next, let's go to, if y'all would, let's go to item 17, which is community updates. Updates from Commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Precinct One.
Thank you, Judge. Couple important, um, things to mention here. We have, uh, outer loop public scope meetings coming up again. That'll be Tuesday, October 29th, 5:30 to 7:30 at the Midway Church in Pilot Point. And then on Wednesday, October 30th, 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM at the Denton Convention Center Embassy Suites. They also will have a virtual option that runs October 29th through, uh, November 29th. That'll be on the Denton County website. And then I also want to say again, um, how much I enjoyed and how wonderful the job that, uh, the county did, HR department did with the employee appreciation event that we had on Sunday. It was a gorgeous day. We're very fortunate and we had a lot of, uh, people show up, a lot of friendly families and I got to speak to a lot of people. And again, I appreciate what, what our county does for our employees and thank you to the employees that, that came. I really appreciate it.
Perfect.
Thank you, Judge.
You bet. Commissioner Falconer.
Judge, so I want to echo the sentiments about the employee appreciation. That was my first one and I really enjoyed it and it was great to see everyone out there. And thanks to the HR department and all those who put that together. I also want to, uh, remind everyone that, um, that early voting starts next week. So don't forget to get out and, and, uh, and do your early voting. And then I've got some, uh, events happening across Precinct Two. Um, in Carrollton, there's a Health and Wellness Workshop on the 16th at 6:00 PM. That's at the Municipal Court Community Room. And, uh, then there's the Elm Fork Spooktacular Nature Fest on the 19th from 5:00 to 7:00. That's at the Elm Fork Nature Center. And then there will be a, um, the Mother-Sun Monster Mash that's going to happen at Creekview High School on the 19th from 6:00 to 9:00. And then in Corinth, the Halloween Bash, um, and that is going to be the 19th from 4:00 to 9:00 at the, um, Commons at the Agora. Lots of fun things going on at that, so you want to make it there. And then in Frisco, they're doing a steam clean, apparently handing out supplies to, uh, help with cleaning up locations around the city. That's on the 19th from 8:00 to 11:00. And in Little Elm, a, um, Fall Carnival at the Cove. And that's at the Cove on the 17th at 4:00. And that is all I have.
Part of it good. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
Um, we have Corinth Fire Open House on October the 26th. That's next week. Uh, Lake City's Chamber of Commerce Gun and Hoses Pickleball Tournament. Uh, that's the police officers and the firefighters, uh, at the Oakmont, uh, Country Club on October the 27th, 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Flower Mound, we have the Lakeside Music Series, October 18th and the 25th, 7:30 PM at the Shops at Lakeside. We also have Flower Mound Police Department Open House, October the 19th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Kurt Patrick Lang in Flower Mound. We have the Dewali Festival of Lights, October the 19th. We have the Seventh Annual Lakeside 5K and Family Fund Day, October the 26th at Lakeside Park. In Holland Village, we're still having concerts in the park. This one is on October the 19th, 7:00 PM, nine to 9:00 PM at Doubletree Ranch. Louisville will have a full moon night hike. That's going to be at Leila. Um, enjoy a night hike during this full moon. I hope the Wolfman doesn't come out then. Then we have a women.
You can't wait to miss that. That's right.
We have a Women in Florence Network launching on October the 18th at 11:30 AM at Salerno. Sponsored by the Louisville Area Chamber of Commerce. We'll have the acoustic jam session, October the 18th at Louisville Grand Theater. And that's the one I'm going to do, Judge. Thrive's Acoustic Jam, also on October the 18th. And that's at Valley Parkway. And then we have a free vision screening, October the 28th, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM in the Holland Village Lions Club. It's going to be offering free vision screening for ages six months and older. So please govern yourself accordingly.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Edmondson.
Precinct Four has quite a few things going on. Let's start off with everybody recognizing that Denton has a whole month of Halloween. They're recognized as Halloween City right now and it's pretty scary, so I hope you all enjoy it. They're also having their community tree giveaway, which is on the 19th of October, and they're going to offer free trees to Denton residents. You need to register ahead of time to get your choice of tree. In Justin, we're going to have the Lane Wilkerson Fish Fry. It's the 51st Annual Fish Fry, helping to fund their fire department. That's going to be on the 19th from 4:30 to 7:30. Tickets are on the Justin Fire Department website. Their Fall Cleanup is going to be on the 26th at City Hall, and citizens can bring their bulk trash to City Hall and dispose of it for free. E-waste will also be accepted. In Crum, on the 19th, we're going to have the Community Market Fall Family Festival. This is local vendors, live music, candy, and family-friendly events. Sorry about that. In New Fairview, they're having a Halloween event on the 19th. They're going to have face painting, et cetera. And in Roanoke, on the 16th, they're going to have their Community Truck or Treat. This is where they are having all kinds of fun, and this is another family-friendly event. Trophy Club continues with their Coffee with a Cop, and that's on the 16th. They're also having their Fall Garage Sale on the 19th, and then they're having their Love Cassidy Car Show on the 20th. And lastly, they continue having their Breakfast with Tiffany, which is of course with the mayor of Trophy Club. Lastly, I'd like to just say that they're going to have a National First Responders Day event on the 26th from 4:00 to 6:00 at their town center. This is to support and recognize first responders, and they're going to have a canine demonstration plus an interactive fire hose challenge for kids. So, sounds like a lot of fun and there's lots of good stuff going on all over the county.
All right, Commissioner Mitch wants to amend her comments.
I just want to say thanks to the Human Resource Department and all our employees that helped and volunteered to make the picnic a great success, and I think everybody had a great time. Every year, you all do better and better, and I just want to thank you to the employees. I certainly always enjoy it, so thank you, I appreciate you.
Good, thank you. Yes, I echo those comments about the employee appreciation picnic. It was very well executed and I appreciate HR and all that you did and everybody coming out and having a good time. It was a lot of fun. Couple things, the Summit Club of Flower Mound is having Smoke Fest. The annual Summit Club Smoke Fest will be held at the promenade at the Riverwalk in Flower Mound on Friday and Saturday, October 25 and 26. Mark your calendar. It's going to be a lot of fun. So, and on the Saturday from 11:05, they're going to taste some great barbecue, listen to live music, and shop with some of their vendors. I would like to acknowledge a guest we have with us today, Commissioner Carter.